All right, we are going to call this meeting to order. This is our Yaton Borough Council meeting, legislative session September 18th, 2025. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we proceed with roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Our esteemed Mayor Roland Hepkins.
President.
Council President Latoya Monroe.
Present.
Council Vice President Leona Roklout.
Here.
Councilwoman Antoinette Chuheart.
Present.
Councilman Michael Trent.
Here.
Councilwoman Nicole Beating.
Present.
Councilman Jesse Peets.
Present.
Councilwoman Lauren Johnson.
Present.
We have Sean Kilkeny, our Solicitor from Kilkeny Law.
Here.
We have Mafie Nichols, our Finance Director.
Present.
Megan Tadaro from Pinoni Engineering is not present. And Yolanda Hughes, our Tax Collector, is also not present this evening. Madam President.
All right, next up, we will move forward with our Citizens Forum. We have Ms. Jo Moore Richard. Before you start your, please, I'm sorry, Mike, but before you start your three minutes, I want to make sure that if the grant money allocation is something that you wanted to talk about, we can get my residents out of the way. We did hold an executive session this evening, and in that executive session, I allowed our Chief and our Solicitor to review all of my documentation, my driver's license, my vehicle registrations, my car insurance, tax returns, tax invoices, my real estate tax bills for a handful of properties that I own in Delaware County. I have never purported to this council that I do not have more than one residence. I've always said that my primary residence is in the borough of Yaton. My family does have multiple homes, but my primary residence is here in this borough of Yaton. All right, now, you can start your three minutes. I don't want you to waste your time on that when we already discussed it.
And I appreciate that. What I will say is, I'm glad that there's documentation, very happy about that. I don't, if you live here, if you are a resident.
Yes, ma'am.
Everything is gravy, it's all good. But if you are not.
Yes.
Then I am saying that, like everything else, there should be an investigation. So it sounds like you've given your information to the Solicitor for that.
And I allowed the Chief to review it to, just because he might be used to looking at fraudulent driver's licenses or whatever, so I made sure that it was.
Because at the end of the day.
Yes.
Enough is enough with the foolishness.
Absolutely.
I mean, it was, you know, the last council people we had.
Yes.
I read the blog, all the messiness that goes on really needs to stop.
It does.
And we need to be about the business of this borough. So if you are a resident of this borough, I have no problem.
Yes.
If you're not, I have a problem.
Yes, thank you.
The other thing is, I know that we received some grant money. So I would like to know, this is for the Finance Director? I would like to know, has that money been allocated? Where has it been allocated? And has any work begun in those areas where the money has been allocated?
Are you, is there a specific grant that you want? Every grant that we apply for has a specific purpose, and it is restricted to that particular purpose. So we recently received a grant, for example, for our sewer system, and that was solely to be used for the sewer system. And it's allocated just for that. So all of the grants that we received are for the purposes in which we apply for them for.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more forms for Citizens Forum, next up, we will have consideration for the minutes.
Excuse me. Motion for consideration of Borough of Yaton Council to reorganize. May I have a second?
Second. So that wasn't moved or properly?
May I have?
That wasn't moved?
For the Borough Manager.
So that wasn't moved or properly seconded? First, we would have to vote to amend the agenda. So I would ask that you retract that motion and then vote.
The agenda, why aren't you supposed to redo this agenda?
There was a, there was a supplemental, so let me take a couple of, there was a supplemental agenda that was posted by the Borough Manager or Borough Staff this morning, I believe. And so, as President Monroe said, the motion would be to amend the agenda per that supplemental agenda, and then a motion to reorganize. That would, that was.
Where is the supplemental agenda?
Just follow the instructions of the Solicitor. He said there would, you would have to place a motion.
Okay, what's the motion?
Sorry, so first, you had.
You want to withdraw the initial.
Okay.
And then a person has seconded, want to withdraw their second.
Motion to withdraw the motion for consideration of Borough of Yaton Council to reorganize.
Withdraw the second.
Withdraw the second.
All right, okay. So next up would be a motion to amend the agenda to include, and then you read what you would like to include.
Okay, motion to amend the agenda for the motion to consider, for consideration of the Borough of Yaton Council to reorganize. May I get a second?
Second. Having been moved and properly seconded on the motion to amend the agenda. Please take the roll call vote.
President Monroe.
No.
Vice President Roklout.
Yes.
Counselor Chuheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
No.
Counselor Peets.
No.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Please make sure that we have added to the agenda the reorganization.
For the Borough of Yaton, Yaton Council to reorganize. Yeah, where would, where would you like to?
Is the supplemental agenda something that you can put after the full agenda?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so this would be after the full agenda?
So may I continue?
No, this, this would.
So, I understand, so I understand what you're saying. It doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to.
After the full agenda. So I would prefer it being next, first, at the beginning.
Thank you.
So do we need, since we've amended the agenda, do we need to allow the Citizens to comment on the agenda?
So I, because it was not on the posted agenda 24 hours in advance, I would recommend that there be public comment for our normal public comment rules.
So there's a, what's been added to the agenda and will appear next before we close Citizens Forum, and since it wasn't on the agenda, is the consideration for the Borough of Yaton Council to reorganize. That would mean to elect a new president, select new officers. So if anyone would like to speak on that, because there, this wasn't on the original agenda, please feel free to do so at this time. Sure.
I support this amendment, changing the agenda. Your failure to change your voter registration, your failure to change your driver's license does not make you a resident. Where you lay your head at night is what makes you a resident. You are not sleeping in Yaton, you are renting out your home in Yaton. There is somebody else registered to vote at that address. You, your husband and daughter, are not sharing a one-bedroom twin in Yaton, a one-bathroom twin in Yaton, when you have a lovely home in Lansdowne. This is a copy of your certificate of use and occupancy for your home in Lansdowne. You received it September 6th, 2023, before you were reelected. The list of permits for that property explicitly say residential, strictly owner occupied, no rental space at this address. That house in Lansdowne can be nothing but your residence. Somebody else is living at 423 Holly, and it's not you.
Mr. Kilkeny, we discussed this ad nauseam in our executive session, where I presented you with all of my documents. And again, I have never purported that I do not have multiple residences. Can you please speak into?
Sure.
What we've spoken about.
So I was asked this question by council. I sent a memo out to council, I believe, earlier this week, explaining the residency issue and council's role in the residency issue. If someone, if a counselor or citizen wanted to challenge any counselor's residency, council does not make that determination, the Solicitor does not make that determination, Borough Staff does not make that determination. What would happen is, it would be asked to be looked into by the District Attorney of Delaware County, Mr. Stolsteimer's office, or the Attorney General of Pennsylvania. If they determine it was something that they wanted to take up, they would file what's called a Quo Rento action in the Court of Common Pleas here in Delaware County. That, I'm not a judge by any means, but we've looked at the case law involving this, and courts look at several factors related to this. You're allowed to have, you know, own multiple properties. What they would look for in evidence for your residency is factors such as driver's license, utility bills, voter registration, school registration, these various factors. That cannot be decided or determined by this council. That can only be decided or determined by a judge after a motion in court is brought forward by either the District Attorney or the Attorney General. Before this, before this meeting, Counselor Monroe, President Monroe, did present to me and the Chief a series of documents, again, I'm not a judge, with her address here in Yaton, such as, you know, a driver's license, bills, taxes, and various matters. But again, I, this is not this council's determination.
Mr. Kilkeny, did I present that information to you voluntarily, or was it requested?
It was, it was presented to me voluntarily.
Okay, is there any other, oh, I'm sorry.
You would need to come up and identify yourself if you want to make public comment.
So I'm Jo Moore Richard. So my question then would be, I own a home in Charlotte, North Carolina. I have to file taxes in Charlotte, North Carolina, as well as taxes here. So showing your tax documents, because you are a homeowner or you own property here, you're paying taxes here for those properties, does not necessarily mean that you live at that property.
Yes, that's not what I presented, though. I presented my personal tax returns, I also presented my driver's license, my vehicle registration, my insurance card, my tax invoices, and then I own several other rental properties within Delaware County, and those texts, I showed those tax invoices come to this residence in Yaton. I have multiple residences. I, my primary residence is in the borough of Yaton. So I didn't just present a Yaton tax bill and say, because I pay taxes in Yaton. I went beyond that and said, if this, what I asked Mr. Kilkeny, I said, these are the lists of documents that I'm willing to provide to show you my residency, to prove that this is my primary residence. I said, do you think that this list is exhaustive to make this claim, or do you think I should add anything? His response said it was, was that it was enough. If there were more that were required, then I would have provided it.
So then my, my question would, and that's all fine, as long as there is documentation, as long as you live in Yaton Borough, and it is factual that you live in Yaton Borough, I have no issue at all. But it seems to be an ongoing question, so that the fact that you have supplied the necessary documents to the Solicitor, that's fine. If, for me, it's all about integrity.
Yes, the question is of a political nature.
I've said this so many, well, I have a masters in political.
I know, I'm just letting you know that you said that the question keeps coming up, but that's because the question is politically motivated and not factually motivated.
I don't know about the political. I don't sit around behind my keyboard and talk about anything unless it's relevant to me directly, or something that we ought, as residents in Yaton, need to know. So it's, it's not about political motivation.
I know, not for you, not for you. I'm just saying, when you said it keeps coming up, I've given everything I can to, to try to quell the, the conversations, you know, and, and I've never said that I don't have multiple residences. I'm wondering why the rest of my residences haven't been presented, but.
Again.
You know, like, I, they, with these ones, you know.
Because you're convectional, yeah.
So, so.
Order, please.
Yes, so, so all I'm going to say about this is, if there are avenues that the residents of Yaton are satisfied that we have a council that is working in our best interest, and every council member is a resident of Yaton, I'm good. But I, for me, I don't care about, you know, what everybody else is doing. For me, I need to know that, because I, it is about integrity. We've talked about, before you respond.
I don't know how else to help you know, but this is also.
Is there an investigation being done?
Again, this body does not have the power to investigate this stuff.
Okay, so then, if we wanted, if we wanted to, as residents, me, because I'm not hiding behind anybody, if I wanted to, there are avenues that I can take so that my mind is at peace, right?
And I suggest that you contact Jack Stolsteimer's office. That's, that's the easiest thing to do.
Because I, I don't want to speak for anybody else, and I'm not riding anybody's coattails. This is my tax dollars that I pay, I live in Yaton, and I want all of you to have the best interest of the borough that I reside in.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else wishing to make public comment regarding this matter? All right.
With that being said, I nominate Tony Chuheart.
I'm sorry, you need to make a motion.
I make a motion to nominate Tony Chuheart.
No, ma'am, you need to, you need, the motion has been placed on the agenda, now you have to move the motion. So it would be, I would like for consider, I could do it for you, but.
Go ahead.
Okay. Up for consideration is the reorganization of Borough Council. Is there, you have to move it first?
So moved.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? All right, I'd like to add something. I've served this borough for nearly 10 years. It has been the, it has been an honor and a privilege, and I am thankful to have been able to sit here and lead and restore order within this community. Thankful for each and every one of you, the faith that you put in me, the integrity that you provide, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't care about this borough. I'm not sure how much you all know about serving on Borough Council. The benefit is $55 per week. Some of us have full-time jobs, some of us have husbands, some of us have families. This is a sacrifice to serve in this borough. I do not take it lightly. I do it with pride, and I do it with honor. So at this time, can we proceed with the vote?
I have a comment as well, if I can. I just want to say that I, I want to thank Madam President for her service, and she has done a wonderful job in restoring confidence in our council and decisions that have been made. So if the vote will be to replace her, I, I just want to voice my appreciation before, beforehand, for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an honor to serve by your side. Mr. Nichols, Mr. Cave. Mr. Kilkeny, our team, oh, Megan, you know, thank you. We can proceed with the vote.
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roklout.
Repeat that motion, please.
The motion is to reorganize.
Yes.
Counselor Chuheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
No.
Counselor Peets.
I abstain.
All right.
Counselor Johnson, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. The pause was giving. All right, so the motion carries. We will now reorganize.
I nominate Tony Chuheart, motion to nominate Tony Chuheart to be president.
I don't think you'd do that first.
Don't you have to remove?
No, no.
Okay.
We're reorganizing.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Second.
So ask if there are any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations?
Ask it two more times, and then we're done.
Are there any other nominations?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, from Secretary.
President Monroe.
Have we, what we wanted on?
To, to.
For Tony Chuheart as president.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Vice President Roklout.
Yes.
Counselor Chuheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beating.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Abstain.
Counselor Peets.
I abstain.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. Counselor Chuheart, President Chuheart, your turn.
There are no other, if not, we can close the reorganization unless, maybe else? Motion to close the organization and go back to the regular.
Reorganization is now closed.
Okay, so there's a motion to close the reorganization and go back to the regular agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Guess we vote on that then, right?
Yeah, it's, take a vote on, close the reorganization.
President Chuheart?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Vice President Roklout?
I'm sorry, what was that?
This is the motion to close the reorganization.
Yes.
Counselor Beating?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
I abstain.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And, Madam, Madam President, I have a brief second. Welcome to the gavel. You have a big job ahead of you. I know this community supports you. I am asking you to accept my resignation as Borough Manager, thank you immediately.
Oh, that is surprising, what you're expecting.
I don't need to talk about it, but.
Is that the conversation that was had? We don't want you to resign. I don't think anyone here wants you to resign.
Do you want to go have a brief executive session, maybe discussion?
Yes, maybe we should.
I don't need that, okay? Counselor needs it, that's fine, but I appreciate the opportunity, and good luck.
All right, well, as we prepare to move on, let me just say, I thank you for the confidence that was put in me by my fellow counselors.
Absolutely.
And just as we move forward, we will move forward, and I heard one of the residents use a word that is very important to me, integrity.
Mm-hmm.
It is about integrity, it is about the respect of this community, and all of us are here because of doing what is in the best interest of the community. And I am someone who upholds that to the nth degree, always have been, and always will be. So we will continue to move forward professionally and respectfully, and do what needs to be done so we can move this borough forward. So I thank you. So at this time, I ask for a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Consideration to approve August 14th minutes, the legislative meeting minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions? So at this point, may I ask you, Mafie, if you would please move over to that.
Thank you.
And if you would, thank you, and also if you would, do the roll call, please.
Okay, apologies, I'll.
Yes.
Vice President Roklout?
Yes.
Counselors Beating?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you. The President's report, I, Mayor, I apologize, I'm going to talk.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things on the score. My, my report does stand as submitted. We did have the Mayor's Citizens Forum last Wednesday. Special topic were the recent hospital closings, as well as the future of Medicare and Medicaid, and that was how it hinges upon our overall public safety with EMS service and police medical intervention. And the, the topic was supported by the, by the Yaton Police Department, namely the Chief, but presented by my wife, Sister Joy, who does work at Mercy Fitzgerald. Police staffing, a full-time officer did retire last month, which leaves a current vacancy. Civil Service Commission has been requested to conduct a new hiring list, as the old one has been exhausted, to fill that vacant vacancy. In addition, a, a recent promotional sergeant exam is currently in process. There is a Faith in Blue Weekend of, of the next month, October 10th, 11th, and 12th, is a national program where the police departments and clergy come together to support each other in faith, and we certainly need, with the dangers and with policing and in our society, we certainly can use divine support. So there's going to be a, a prayer session Friday, October 10th, 7:00 p.m., at the Circle outside the library, and on Sunday, October 12th, there will be a medical service, all that St. Michael's Episcopal Church at their 11:00 a.m. service, and we do rotate the different established churches in Yaton. And then finally, the flag was held at half-staff, flown at half-staff on September 11th for our annual national recognition for 9/11, and the flag is now currently being flown at half-staff starting today per the Governor Shapiro's order for the five police officers who were shot yesterday, with three of them losing their lives. There ends my report, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nichols, may I ask you to present the manager's report?
Yes, Madam President. For council's consideration, management is asking for you to consider approving the completion of probationary period for employee number 10283, with full benefits and time off of pro-effective September 22nd, 2025.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions? Make a new roll call, please.
President Chuheart?
Yes.
Vice President Roklout?
Yes.
Counselor Beating?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Madam President, asking for consideration of approving the completion of the probationary period for employee number 10284, with full benefit allotment and time off of pro-effective September 22nd, 2025.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
President Chuheart?
Yes.
Vice President Roklout?
Yes.
Counselor Beating?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, Madam President. The vote is unanimous, Madam President.
Consideration to approve the remote work, work-from-home policy.
We have a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
We can do the roll call.
Yeah, no questions.
No questions, I'm sorry. Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. So what is the policy? Paul, is getting any information regarding it?
It was emailed in the package.
It's in the package, okay, I didn't mind.
And essentially, it doesn't, it mirrors, uh, municipalities throughout the panel of Pennsylvania. You have to have prior approval, uh, it has to go to the personnel committee, committee for review and approval before it's granted, and primarily around medical emergencies and things like that.
Right, okay, thank you.
And if I just may add to that, just for more clarity, it was discussed with the personnel committee, we need to talk about it at any time, yes.
Thank you.
Now may I have a motion?
Well, we have, we had that, the roll call vote now?
Yes, please.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
The motion is unanimous.
We're also asking for consideration for the hiring of the Ronic, uh.
Gleason.
Gleason at Victoria. Uh, as a part-time library assistant at the starting rate of $14 an hour pending the successful completion of a background check.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any question? Hearing none, we have the vote, please.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
We're also asking for consideration for the promotion of Tiffany Simmons to full-time library administrative assistant with full benefit allotment and full-time off of pro effective September 29th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, we can take the vote.
President Johnson, I'm sorry, President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
All right, we are now asking for consideration to advertise ordinance number 2025-012, amending 285-19, One Way Street Established, formerly adding McGave Boulevard between Church Lane and West Cops Creek Parkway.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, take the vote, please.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are now asking for consideration to advertise ordinance number 2025-013, amending 285-85, parking prohibited on certain streets on certain days to add McGave Boulevard, south side between Church Lane and West Cops Creek Parkway, no parking between 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. on Thursdays.
So moved.
Seconded.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
I'm sorry, bear with me, I'm. Uh, consideration for the adoption of the amendment to ordinance number 2025-003, special purpose and special permit parking to add the availability of 10 parking spots for overnight parking in the Gunther Municipal Lot.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, almost there. And the last one is consideration to re-enter into a two-year agreement with Delaware County School Health Trust to provide health and related benefit coverage for the borough gaining effective January 1, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll have the vote.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Be much briefer than the manager's report. Uh, so this is, uh, merely an insurance matter, that's before council tonight, I'm gonna go ahead and read it all. Count, uh, consideration for council to settle docket number 4824027NYCNY-0001/EFD- rolls right off the tongue here, 0002598, within the terms of the proposed stipulation agreement, subject to the solicitor's final review and approval.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, we will take the vote.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, that is your report.
That is my report.
All right, do we have a tax collector's report?
I do, Madam President.
Yeah.
Uh, for the month of August, the borough collected a total of $146,154.31. The breakdown for real estate tax was $77,472.51. Borough trash, $5,808. Borough store, $62,873.80. That is the report, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I know the engineer is not present, did the engineer submit a report?
There was a report submitted in the back, yeah.
Okay. All right, fine, you're up again.
All right. Like old times, right? Consideration of the AP list for the, for September 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any question? All right, hearing none, we'll take the vote.
Uh, President Johnson.
Truheart.
Is he's paper, no.
I'm old, I'm old, I'm no president.
It must be the paper that makes sense, because it does the first thing. Uh, President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Uh, Madam President, I also ask for consideration for the August 2025 cash balance report.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All right, hearing none, we will vote.
All right, President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Madam President, one more, we are asking for the consideration to adopt resolution number 2025-011, authorizing the sale of the 2025 delinquent borough real estate taxes to municipal revenue service.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? We'll take the vote, please.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, ordinance is in zoning. Mr. Collins, you're up.
All right, hello, everybody.
Hello.
For those who don't know me, my name is Mike Collins. My report stands as last week, however, we would like for consideration for advertisement of ordinance number 2025-014, requiring re-annual commercial use and occupancy inspections in the borough of Yaden.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, could you just give us a brief summary?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
So, so basically, it will, every year, all commercial properties will have to pay a fee, and we will go and inspect them for fire and life safety issues. Um, we will also, they will also be required within that to have a Knox, Knox box, which is if something happens in our property, their fire department or emergency unit has a key, that they can get into their property and they can take care of the situation before it expands to another property or whatever happens, so we can better get in control of that. Um, there will be a list of requirements that they will have, that will be considered in the process of doing the inspections, to better serve the community as it came about from previous matters that we had.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, we'll take the vote.
President Truheart.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Collins, let me just add, thank you, you have hit the ground running, and we really appreciate what you're doing and your dedication to, to your job, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it obviously.
And I also want to say to you, um, evidently you did talk with Holy Cross Cemetery, there's painting the rest of that, uh, fence black, it's really looking nice. Now, I won't be here after December, but please stay one day. I want all of it painted black.
We will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Public Works.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Our last Public Works report is as stands, we just have a consideration for the approval of an LSA grant and a resolution for the Public Works Facility Upgrade Number 2025-XX.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, are there any questions?
Did you say it's an approval or is it an advertising?
Approval. This is an approval for an LSA grant.
So, so the LSA grants require, uh, a resolution approved by council when you submit the application, and they're just asking for council approval to apply for the grant.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, no, because it has on here advertising.
And ma'am, I'm sorry, did you have a question, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Um, you, um, you identified this with a number, and the number isn't one. These are formed.
I, I don't know the number.
What is the number?
2025-XX.
So, so, no, I, I think the number he's referring to, we have resolution numbers that we assign, uh, so that we can log them and keep track, so that the XXs, we, we probably didn't give Catherine the number.
Oh, okay. Should we be identifying it with the number now?
Not necessarily.
It's not necessary.
No, because that's an internal way that we track it, so that we can pull, we need to pull documents, but it's not like a requirement if you have a resolution number attached.
Okay. But this is for 2025.
Correct.
Okay.
So may I also ask a question?
Sure.
If you could elaborate on exactly what the grant is for, you say upgrade, so for the, the benefit of us and the community, if you can let us know what that will be.
The upgrades are for the Public Works Department itself, for new facilities, new bathroom facilities.
Okay.
Larger offices, um, more storage, um, for supplies, um, a bunk room for, eh, sleeping overnights during storms, just a greater facility.
For the facility upgrade.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, all right, so if there are any other questions, then we will take the vote. Counselor Beatty, did you have a question?
That's.
I'm, I'm thinking aloud, if I may, Madam President, because the chief is also applying for the same.
No, no, no.
And if, well, not that we shouldn't be, um, I didn't know that Public Works applied for the grant, to be honest. But a stronger, we probably should talk about this internally, but a stronger application would be for us to probably do something for the, the borough, the Yaden Borough, and identify the departments and just submit one grant so that we're not competing against ourselves. I just want, I mean, you, you, we can vote, but I think when we go to do the submission, that we could clean it up a little better so that we're submitting one application, so we're not competing against ourselves.
Okay.
And everyone has a plot.
Right, and which makes perfect sense, which normally is how it works, particularly when you have, coming from the, the same municipality or the same organization, they look at it better if it's a collaborative effort.
A hundred percent, yes.
So the motion would need to be amended, because it says specifically Public Works.
Yes, the next motion is police, um, so you, you're directly approving both, but when we submit, I mean, we can do it either way, and Mr. Phil, I mean, you can chime in here if, if you like. Sure. If you approve, if you approve both, in my opinion, we will only submit one resolution with a total application and total package encompassing both departments.
Right.
I agree with that, yes.
So are we amending it to say just that?
What are you suggesting?
Because.
The resolution needs to reflect, if we're going to, that we need to submit, needs to reflect that everything, everything that it encompasses.
Right, right, so it should be amended to include that it'll be for Public Works Facility and for the Police Department.
Any other departments?
These are the only two that are applying at this time. Uh, we, we received one last year for Hudson Run.
Hudson Run, please.
So we should amend this?
We should amend it, yeah.
See if there's any public comment on that, and then vote.
Okay. All right, so I, I make, I am making a motion to amend the amendment to show that we will be considering for an application for both Public Works and the Police Department for this LSA grant.
So moved.
Second.
Let me take, any questions about the amendment? Okay. Let me take the vote on the amendment, please.[1617.32]
Yes. President Trueheart?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Pete?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
So now may I have a motion to, to accept or the amended motion?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
And see if there's any public comment on it, just because...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Okay. Any questions, additional questions from council? All right. All right, hearing none, then we will take the vote, please.
President Trueheart?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Pete?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you so much. All right. Now, next up is our Police Department. Public Safety.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My report stands as read at the caucus meeting. Any questions? I do have one, one item now. I'm asking for a consideration to seek approval from the Civil Service Commission to advertise and hold the test for the position of police officer within the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, we will take the vote.
President Trueheart?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Pete?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And if, if I could just add one thing, I know the mayor brought it up, what happened in York yesterday. One of the officers started out in the 25th District where I worked. He was a Philadelphia officer, started in '01, then went to Highway Patrol, left New York, and he was one of officers, Detective Mark Baker. He was shot and killed yesterday. So I would just ask that you keep, you know, him, his family, and Dave Lash is the chief up there, and he's also the chief, or he's the president of the Chiefs Association, so he just lost three of his officers in one day, and, you know, another one's injured, and his local sheriff's up there is injured, and I would just, you know, just think of them, you know, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We certainly will keep them, their families in prayer, all of our officers and birth responders.
Yes.
Absolutely. Is there an emergency management report, or is someone here from the Fire Department?
Oh, that's the LSA. Yeah, I'm sorry, that one took that.
Okay. Oh, no, for the emerg, I was asking, was there a report for emergency management? Okay. Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I was, I was looking at DIB, but that's the one that...
Right.
Right, okay, yeah, LSA.
Local chair, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Planning Commission, we do not have a report presently. Recreation?
Our report stands as submitted. Roy is on a much well-deserved vacation, so we're sending him well wishes while he's on vacation. He will be giving the reports in October, because unfortunately I have to have my tonsils removed at this right age, so I'm not gonna be, I'm not, I'm gonna be in a lot of pain. So I probably will be, if I can talk, teleconferencing in for the legislative, so there's really nothing else to report other than the Veterans Branch is coming up on November, so hope to see you all, the vets and their families.
Thank you. We will certainly keep you in prayer with that as well. Thank you, thank you.
And Madam President?
Yeah.
May I make a statement?
Yes.
The Veterans Banners Program has started for hometown heroes. If you know anyone that's a veteran, or anyone's family who has a veteran who's even deceased, they can have a banner put up. It would cost $160. It's for the banner, the equipment and everything. Also, someone asked me if there was a possibility that Public Works could maybe do a brick, you know, project like what they did at the library, because some people may not be able to afford the $160, and we could come up with a price for each brick, for each veteran. You think we could do that?
I'll check with the library. I think they have a break for a very, the bricks have to...
Okay, and that'll, thank you. That'll make it easier for a lot of the veterans' families.
Counsel, quick question. The bricks are specifically for veterans.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And instead of them having to spend $160 on a banner, they'll spend a lot less money for a brick with their name, you know, and their title, you know.
Right. I remember for the library, it was like 110 dollars, something like that, seventy...
Yeah, like a hundred dollars. Yeah, I got a brick. It was nice, yeah. Oh, Madam Chair. All right, so...
Madam Chair. Where, where are you putting the bricks?
Well, Public Works will make the, he's going to speak with the library, because they started a project like that, and they, they were thinking maybe the community park. You all have to decide where it would go. I don't know.
Yeah, that's gonna, yeah, I think, no, yeah, I think that this deserves a conversation.
Okay.
In addition to the specifics of the banners, like the design, the color, so forth and so on.
Well, the banners of Councilman Pete's and I already, along with the Borough Manager, Rafi Cave, we already picked out the banner. That's gonna, it's gonna be uniform throughout Yaden. It'll be the same one.
How will the customer know what the design looked like? How will they know?
Well, he was supposed to have everything put on the website so that people could go on, register online and send in their money.
Yeah, so, okay.
Vice President Roelklaub, it is a, the company that the municipalities, it is a uniform, and so they pretty much look the same in every town. I know, and President True, I don't know if it's all the ones that they just put on the, so they look just like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And Upland and Prokay, they all are kind of the same. I can send you...
No, don't send it to me, but I think we should have it displayed somewhere so people know exactly what they're getting.
Yeah, it was supposed to be put on the website. So can you please make sure that it's, a sample is on the website, that the form that they have to fill out is on the website. If anyone cannot find their DD 214 or their DD 210, tell them to call media, Veterans Office, and we'd put the main number for that, and, and they'll help them get everything. It'll be real easy.
No.
Thank you so much. Please spread the word, everybody.